It's five years old, so it's not surprising.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for those that have perhaps not ever attended a public hearing, just a little bit of procedure. First of all, we will be speaking, we will be asking for comments specifically on the ordinance. And this public hearing will only go one hour. The reason for that is because we have a regular meeting at seven o'clock. And there are some presentations and stuff that we have to get through. However, don't be dismayed if you have not had a chance to speak. And the eight of, the seven o'clock comes around. We are going to adjourn this public hearing to October 23rd at 6:00 PM. So there will be plenty of opportunities. I'm also limiting everybody to three minutes. Again, don't be dismayed if you get cut short. You can come at the end and finish after your three minutes. The reason we're eliminate, I'm limiting it to three minutes is to get everybody that we can an opportunity to speak. And I know some of you have spoken several times, so we want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak. I should mention that we have a lot of correspondence. There will, there will not be a vote tonight, just so you are aware. We have a lot of correspondence. Most of it came in today after most of us were out and about, and so most of us have not read correspondence.
They came in today.
They came in today. A lot of correspondence came in today. A petition came in today, interestingly enough, with 70 names on it, asking us not to regulate. Huh?
Was in support of not regulating.
Oh, yeah, asking us to not regulate short-term rentals. However, it's not, it was not a legal petition, but I will mention we did that, get that as well. So we probably had another, maybe what, 15 emails today, somewhere in that nature. So just so, we want you to know that it's a very, popular is not the word. What is it?
It's dynamic.
A popular hot topic, but we want everybody to be heard. It's just, it's going to be a little bit, it might be a little bit fragmented, so bear with us. At this time, I will ask Roxanne to read the call of the public hearing.
The Leder Town Council will conduct a public hearing at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, September 25th, 2019, in the Town Council Chambers, Town Hall Annex 741, Colonel Lederd Highway, Lederd, Connecticut, to receive comment on the proposed ordinance regulating short-term rentals in the town of Lederd. At this hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard, and written communications will be accepted. This was dated at Lederd, Connecticut, on the 12th day of September, 2019. For the Leder Town Council, Linda C. Davis, was published in the New London Day on September 16th, 2019.
Thank you. Kevin DeBruski is the Chair of the Land Use Committee. Many of you have met him when you have spoken before his committee. Andre English is the Chair of the Admin Committee, and some of you have met her as well. But for this meeting, Kevin is going to just give a very brief presentation. Not so much on the ordinance as to how we got here.
So, I have to remember the timeline on this. Probably about a year and a half, close to two years ago, we have received comments concerns about short-term rental based upon some safety incidences and a number of people blocking roads up in the Long Pond area. So we started to investigate and ask some questions. When initially we came to Land Use, the reason they came, we were going to start looking at some draft ordinances and what we could do. Looking at some ordinances that some other communities had generated to see what we, if we wanted to go in that direction. At that point, it was such a large contingent of persons, of individuals who showed up. We decided instead of just having a, the committee, Land Use Committee itself, just talk amongst themselves. So we were definitely open to a public hearing, allowing those that we hear to provide comment. That was like a two-hour meeting the first night. So that was very, very informative, we got a lot of information. We also then asked for some draft ordinances to come back to us so that we could consider. We did receive a version of the draft ordinance that was supplied to us, which then we reviewed and then decided to send it to staff and legal counsel for review. And at that point, it was decided that, that the draft ordinance that was provided was probably insufficient for what we were looking for if we were going to work of regulate short-term rentals in the town of Lederd. So the Attorney Lynn King Hammer and our Planning Director, Liz, Liz Burdick, sat down together and came up with a, a new set of draft ordinance that would move forward. I saw some correspondence today that basically said that, that was thrown away. That decision that thrown away was not made by Liz Burdick, that was made by the Land Use Committee to move forward in a different direction. So I will have, I will say that. That was not a, the decision was made by one person on their own. So we've received the, the draft ordinance from the attorney and Liz's work. We've gone through, we've had discussions, we've taken many correspondence in the Land Use. At which point, we moved the ordinance forward to Admin. And then Admin also worked on it for a couple of months to go through, try to find train and where the best way to move forward with that, in order to where we are today. The ordinance that is in front of us at this public hearing.
So we kind of have three people in the room, kinds of people in the room. We have the yes, this is a great ordinance group. We have a no, we don't want any ordinance group. And then we have, yeah, this ordinance is good, we want to regulate it, but we don't like this particular ordinance. So it'd be interesting to hear what you have to say, and that is what we were here for. So at this time, I will open this up to public comments. Again, ask you to limit to three minutes, state your name and address when you come up. Yes, sir.
My name's John Plisensky, I'm 238, 335. Section 1 of the ordinance's purpose. The sentence states that ordinance is not intended to regulate rentals of residential property for the purpose of, the purpose of a primary residence. Recommendation, under Section 3 requirements, it should be added in the case of a non-primary resident, an SDR permit, not be allowed in R20s, R40s, R60s, MFDs, DD zone areas. Non-primary resident SDR is little controlled by the property owner. Noise, parking, and other nuisances are not being controlled. In addition, this should be considered business being operated in a residential zone. It should not be allowed. Under Section 2, definitions, calling you. Recommendation, it should include the definition as defined in Section 8.11 on zoning regulation dated effective 2/11/19. The reason, this includes apartments, condos, and other structures. Under Section 3B, procedures. Add, all inspection fees shall be paid by the, by the owner. This should not be a cost to the town. Under Section 3C, permit application requirements. Add a copy of the application should be provided to all joint property owners, including those across the town road or street 30 days in advance. Joint property owners have the 30 days to provide comments to the application that the town's review as part of the application process. The reason, in Section 4, it states, with the condition for the protection of the public health, public safety, public convenience, neighboring property, neighboring property values. To ensure that the SDR is operating in a way that doesn't affect, affect safety, parking on town roads, creation of nuisance, noise, and not degrade property values. The surrounding neighbors should have a say in reading process. In addition, the application form states it must be submitted to, to the town 30 days in advance. So it already has the time set that neighbors should have an input to the application. Under Section 4.2, information packet supplied to the renter. Recommendation, the noise and nuisance shall be included in the information packet, packet starting stating that the noise, disruptive noise, shall be reported at all times in quiet hours shall be observed in the hours of nine PM to 8 AM. Quiet if disruption, property, property neighbors are forbidden. Just emphasize that the renters, the stars have a party house. Quiet hours are already put in statute already. Under 4.3 occupancy. It says after two persons provided for bed. Should be added that two persons per room, with an actual five guest rooms per dwelling unit. This is consistent with Section 5, 8.5, the zoning regulation effective 2/11/19. Hycomity. Add the hundred room size definition. Mr. Eric, I think you say his name is Tress, Tresser?
Yes, sir.
Okay. They commented that on 9/19 regarding the adoption of the hundred room size definition. Then 4.4, restrictions of use. After special events, include the following special event, including events that violate the noise and nuisance clause as stated herein. Again, emphasize the noise restrictions.
Sir, how much more do you have?
Three more. Am I three minutes up? I was trying to go fast.
I just want others to be able to speak.
Yep. Noise and nuisance, and the reason for denial should be included that we know an application failure could have compliance with Section 4 of the regulation condition and requirement conduct of the previous year should be a reason for denial. Last, there should be more, better definition of what is a defined reasonable cause for denial. It's very good.
Did you submit this in writing?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Yes, sir. O'Neal.
Hi, my name is Arala Gamash, and I live at 10 Sleepy Hollow, Pentway, in Galesbury. I am in favor of short-term.
I'm sorry, did you get that, Roxanne?
I did nothing.
Your name and.
She needs to speak into the mic.
Your name?
Hey, bring it over.
What was your name?
Arala, A-U-R-E-L-A, Gamash, G-A-M-A-C-H-E.
An address?
10 Sleepy Hollow, Pentway.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to ask you to speak in that microphone, although it does not project into the room. We need it for the taping or recording.
I'll start again. My name is Arala Gamash, and I live at 10 Sleepy Hollow, Pentway, in Galesbury. I am in favor of short-term rentals. When I look for accommodations, when I'm traveling, the first thing I look for is an Airbnb. I've stayed in Airbnbs in Vermont, Maine, Virginia, and Washington State. I've never had a bad experience, the host has been, it's been wonderful. There are rules that we follow, and, you know, it works well. I think when you're staying in a residential area in that kind of situation, you get a feel for the community, and you also get insider tips like to maybe small restaurants or bakeries that they wouldn't get from TripAdvisor. And so that's my feelings on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Jeannie Bryant, and I live at 1899 Route 12, also in Galesbury. And just got the email yesterday about tonight's meeting, so. Okay, a couple of things I tried to absorb, especially people's remarks to see what the rest of the community was thinking. And one thing that became very, very clear is that not all the neighborhoods in our sizable town are represented. I saw a lot of comments from the Long Pond people, I understand their concerns. But in Galesbury, we are just a hair's breadth away from opening an Airbnb. We've done work on a renovation, we're very happy about it, like, like the former person who just spoke. We have visited Airbnbs all over the world and love it, and, and follow the rules. We don't have the same problems as Long Pond, but we are just as much a part of the Lederd community. We have two and a half acres, we could park 20 cars out there and wouldn't disturb a soul. We could have a party going on and wouldn't disturb a soul. So it is different, and I think that these differences are reflected. All you have to do is drive around Lederd and see the differences in people in the wooded areas, people on, on ponds, people on, on the water. And so, and vacation rentals have been part of the whole southeast of Connecticut and the whole coast forever. Ordinance, yeah, we are, I'm in favor of an ordinance, but not the one as written. I'm afraid as I read the things about it being too restrictive. I don't know why I need to duplicate when my apartment is in, in my house, why I have to duplicate all these inspections all the time. I don't know why it isn't provisioned that I have a backup for someone to be on call if I happen to be out of the country or, or otherwise laid up. So that's my concern. I think we need an ordinance, but I don't think we should rush in and enact this particular one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir.
How you doing tonight, folks? Chris Willis, I live at 32 Long Pond Road, Lederd, Connecticut. I went out after, I'm sure you guys heard last, about, I don't know, it's a good 14 months ago now. They had some nasty wildfires, Northern California. Me and a couple buddies went out there to work, we stayed in a lot of Airbnbs. They don't particularly pick from a group of people that they know aren't going to be responsible or take care of their homes or their property, I don't know if this is working or not. But they usually look at who they're gonna have in their homes and their property. As far as I'm concerned, the Airbnb is a great thing. I stayed with this one family, and it still kills me this day. This woman lost both of her boys and her husband in the fire. They were wildland, hotshot firefighters, all three of them died. Her only way to make a living was her Airbnbs at this point. I want to say I think they're a good thing, I live on the lake. Do they need to be regulated? Yes, there's nuisance ordinances out there, there's, there's ordinances where you can only be up till 10 o'clock and you got to go to bed. I think it should be regulated a little bit, but this ordinance may be pushing a little bit. That's my opinion on that. Take it for what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Yes.
Hi, Julie Cray. I live at 64 Stony Brook Road in Galesbury. So I'm not at Long Pond, but have a similar situation. I would like to briefly describe what it's like to live next to a non-hosted vacation rental listed on the Airbnb website. The listing of this particular house reads, "Big beautiful property near casinos, sleeps 20." It has 4.91 stars, and the owner is a super host, whatever that means. There is a pool, hot tub, and fire pit with a very large deck so the guests can enjoy sitting outside. As you can imagine, there are guests at this house nearly every weekend, all year long. There are often large groups with lots of cars. I would like to say that 80% of the time, they will make noise during the day and get quiet around 10 o'clock at night. However, there are times when they don't quiet down. For instance, there was a bachelor party at the house last February. We know it was a bachelor party because they stand out on the deck and talk at full volume. Even though it was four degrees below zero, at 3:00 AM, we woke to a choir of drunken men sitting in the hot tub singing at the top of their lungs. The group that was there this past 4th of July weekend brought some sort of sound and light system for their music, played it at a volume so loud you could hear it above our air conditioners and television all day and into the night. Another neighbor went over, asked them nicely to turn the music down, which they did for one hour, and then turned it back up. Our neighbor tried to get in touch with the property owner. I actually don't know the particular outcome of that attempt. In addition to the volume, the lyrics of the music this particular evening gave my 14-year-old daughter an education in a topic she didn't need to know about. We finally called the non-emergency police number at 10:00 PM, and 15 minutes later, they received a visit from Lederd's finest, and we had peace and quiet. These are only two examples of many instances. I am in favor of the proposed ordinance, particularly for the non-hosted vacation rentals. I believe the requirement of, one, a local property representative, two, the occupancy restriction, three, the use restriction, and four, the noise and nuisance clause will help the neighbors, the owner, and ultimately the guests. As it is now, there is no noise ordinance in Lederd. Our only recourse is to wait until the situation reaches the level of breach of peace and then call the non-emergency number. I also have serious concerns about the safety without some regulations in place. The larger parties appear to have large amounts of alcohol. We worry someone's going to fall off that deck, or forget about the fire in the fire pit, or fall into the pool, or a child in the pool. How old are some of these young people throwing these parties? And I can't even think about what might be going on inside the house. Again, most of the time, guests keep to themselves, and I am in favor of this type of business in Lederd. But these large parties thrown by out-of-towners with no consideration for the neighbors and whose sole purpose is to have a wild time, needs to be excluded from STRs. I believe the proposed ordinance will accomplish this. I want to clarify that I am in favor of short-term rentals. Our family has used them in our own travels. They are a great way for owners to supplement income, they boost the economy, and they allow people with different kinds of needs and limitations to even be able to travel. If you go on the website, the Airbnb website, and search our area, you'll see most rentals in Lederd are primary residence rentals. Homeowners who are renting rooms in their primary residence. And these types of rentals don't have the same issues that I'm describing. There are very distinct differences between non-hosted vacation rentals and primary residence rentals in terms of procedure, use, and liability. So I'm just asking the committee to consider these differences, but believe the ordinance as written is good for the business and safety of all STRs. I thank you for your time and your desire to make Lederd a great place to live.
Thank you, Julie. Mr. Rodoliko.
John Rodoliko, 40 Long Pond Road South. I very much appreciate the efforts by the Town Planner, Liz Burdick, and the council in addressing the issue of short-term rentals. This has been discussed for almost two years, and during that time, we've all been educated on the issue. And I fully support this ordinance for several reasons. And I also do not oppose short-term rentals in the town of Lederd. But I do support the ordinance, I think it's a good ordinance. First, I see it as a fairness issue. This ordinance treats short-term rentals for what they are, which is home occupations, but very similar to home occupations. These are lucrative businesses, or can be, and placing reasonable requirements on these operations is fair to the owners, as well as to currently regulated and less intrusive businesses and operations, including the overly regulated and less intrusive legitimate bed and breakfasts. Second, this ordinance addresses the issue of enforcement, which I know has been raised as a concern, and it's my concern, to the extent as it does any other town regulation. This ordinance actually should reduce the burden on the police and land use officials since it clearly lays out to the owners and patrons the expectations for operating and patronizing a short-term rental, including Lederd's unique parking, health and safety, trash disposal, water and septic limitations, and pet regulations. And much of the requirements that are in there are no different than what a homeowner or someone who purchases a home would go through and would be expected to do. Third, this ordinance is a compromise between those who would ban short-term rentals and those who want no regulations. And being an ordinance, the council can always reconsider at a future date if this, this ordinance proves to be overly burdensome and requires modification. Finally, the council has stated that it was waiting for guidance from the COG, which you now have. This, and in addition to advice from the town attorney, confirms the appropriateness of this ordinance. I believe the COG has an excellent assessment, I would urge you, I know it just arrived, but I would urge you to read that. I would disagree with one section in the benefits of short-term rentals for municipalities in the statement. There are benefits primarily economic in nature which can be attained by communities that have regulations or ordinances permitting STRs. Lederd is not Mystic, it's not Stonington or East Lime, and it would be difficult to make the case that short-term rentals, unlike home occupations, benefit anyone but the owner and the patron. But again, I'm not opposed to short-term rentals. But the COG's conclusions clearly support the adoption of short-term rental ordinances and give the justification for doing so in the statement that regulation of short-term rentals through a municipal ordinance seems to present the greatest number of benefits with the fewest drawbacks. Thank you for your efforts, and I urge the adoption of this ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Rodoliko, did you time yourself before you spoke?
Did I what?
Time yourself today.
It was, should be about two minutes and 36 seconds.
Oh, no, it was just like right at three minutes.
Well, good to hear.
Is that a copy?
Oh, I'm going to second.
Next, please. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Marcus Jones for I Long Pond Road, South. I'm speaking today in opposition of the short-term rental ordinance as it's written. I am in support of an ordinance, but I'm going to keep this brief today. You know, I've been involved with this process from the beginning, so if anybody wants to read up on any of my wife's and I's thoughts on the, it's on the record. But what's been interesting is, you know, the whole time that I've been involved with this process, I, we hear the same things, and Kevin, you alluded to it earlier, and that is, you know, we're here because of police matters. There was a lot of party at the Long Pond at one point, there was a parking issue at Long Pond at one point. These are complaints that came in years ago. During this process, I haven't heard a lot of new complaints. So, you know, it makes me wonder, with, with short-term rentals under the microscope at this point, why are we not hearing more and more complaints? While I do agree that there should be checks and balances and ordinance in place, you know, for property owners that do abuse the system, the thought of turning this into an ordinance where we're inspecting people's septic systems, drinking water, limiting the number of short-term rentals an owner can purchase is overreaching and, and feel discriminatory. Our homes used far less than any single-family property, multi-family property, in why we would be subject to all these different regulations. I just don't. I just don't really understand that. As you can probably tell, I believe, I do not believe in overregulation. That is what we're doing here, permits, inspections on single-family homes for issues that don't exist. A lot of the points in this ordinance, I believe in, and I think are great, the noise, the pardons. Nobody wants to have to deal with that, nor should they. But I think we really need to take a step back and remove some of the regulations that have been recommended here. You know, one last, you know, note to the council, and a lot of you I've, you know, seen along the way or probably heard the spiel. You know, I've spent many nights away from my family and my daughter, and always been given the opportunity to speak. I just don't feel like I'm ever being heard. And I feel like that's where we are today. We're at a ordinance where feedback, you know, has not been taken. We've kind of turned into having a one-sided ordinance. So I just ask that we scale back the regulations a little bit on this ordinance, but I am in support of a short-term rental ordinance. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chair? Oh, yes, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment to that, because I think that kind of the overall arching and some of the correspondence we've seen about overregulating to the point of having to do some of these other things like well testing, septic testing, and other things like that. I will say that if you're running a hotel or a bed and breakfast, or a country inn in this town, or anywhere in the state of Connecticut, those are the same requirements that they have to follow. So that's a health and public safety issue, and that's why that was included into the ordinance. Because if you run a bed and breakfast, and you have a legitimate bed and breakfast in accordance with the town of Ledyard zoning regulations, do you have to go follow all the health and safety standards? Those are the same requirements to rent property. That bed and breakfast, hotel, and country inns have to follow. So that's the reason why that I got put in there.
Yeah, and I guess my point is, I'm not operating a bed and breakfast. I'm operating a single-family home. That's my view, but I certainly...
But from the point of you renting it out to someone else, that's why that was put into the ordinance.
Mr. Chair.
Hi, Chair. I'm from Galesbury. I guess I ought to point out, I'm a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, but not speaking for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Prior chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, prior chair of the Planning Commission, prior chair of the Economic Development Commission. So I feel I'm highly qualified to talk about land use issues. I've discussed it with the committee. And I found a couple of things. First, I'm in favor of regulating short-term rentals. I like this ordinance. There are a couple of things that I found that could end up with trouble. If you read the ordinance, nowhere do we define a length of stay for a short-term rental. You could say it's 21 days, but then I say, well, no, I'm going to stay 22 days. Now the ordinance doesn't apply to me because it's greater than the 21-days window that's in there. So I think we ought to say something about a length of stay for a short-term rental. 30 days may be appropriate. I don't know. I looked at a fee schedule in the clerk's office, and I noted that the fees that we're asking for for short-term rentals are out of line with every other fee in the town of Ledyard. Most fees are less than $100. I've always been taught, you collect the fee to pay for the service required to issue the permit. I think these fees are exorbitant, and we don't provide $350 worth of service, and we may want to rethink that. I did note 21 days is consistent with what we have for lengths of stays in zoning regs for bed and breakfasts and country inns. I did like that this ordinance does not cover other short-term stays. It doesn't talk about hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, country inns. It's really targeted at residential homes and residential neighborhoods. So I think that was good. I like the sunset clause at the end of the ordinance. I think that's important because we're going to learn a lot. As you see, most people are waiting for somebody else to drop the shoe. They're going to pick it up and then proceed after that. So we're going to learn when we approve this ordinance. I have another document that I would have loved to put in the record, but I failed to get permission from the author, so I'm not going to put it in the record because it's probably copyrighted, but I can quote from it. There's a difference between a modest private activity and a commercial operation, and I would question whether a non-hosted short-term rental is a commercial operation or not because the owner is not in residence. I've heard tonight from other people that spoke before me that when the owner's in residence, it doesn't seem to be a problem. I'd leave that with you. And we talked about length of time. So really, the length of time where the host is in residence and where does it break between a private contract with two individuals and a commercial operation? And that may be the non-hosted.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
You said you saw a list of fees for bed per...
Yeah, for other activities in town. When you walk into the clerk's office and you stand at the first desk, and you look at the post, there's a list of fees.
Okay, but where did you see the list of fees for short-term?
Nowhere. I'm just saying that this fee for short-term rentals is significantly higher than any other fee we have in town. And I would ask, what services...
The application fee? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, what services are we providing?
Okay.
If it offsets the cost of all the inspections?
Okay. Just thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Sorry about that. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Tyler Harlow from 8 August Meadows, Ledyard, Connecticut. I've spoken a couple of times in favor of short-term rentals, and so obviously, again, I'm going to be in opposition to the proposed ordinance.
Sir, were you the one that submitted the petition?
I was, yes.
Okay.
Would have helped if I knew how to go about submitting a legal petition.
Okay, we can help you with that. If you ever want to do that, we'll be happy to help you with that.
I would really appreciate that.
Yes, we'll do that.
Well, so in general, and I think a lot of what I want to say has already been expressed. I think that this ordinance was created in an effort to prevent problems that were happening and seemed to be happening in specific areas in Ledyard. And I absolutely think that there are problems, you know, to be addressed. However, I also feel like the specific clauses within this ordinance don't really address those problems. That's my interpretation, reading the clauses. And I feel like moving forward with any ordinance, it would be super beneficial to communicate, not just with, you know, one or two owners of short-term rentals, but, you know, different owners of different short-term rentals across Ledyard as a whole, to get a more comprehensive understanding of, you know, what the differences are in problems across Ledyard with the short-term rentals. I also was forwarded an email sent out by the LHBA in which they were talking about, you know, environmental concerns with short-term rentals on Long Pond. And I just wanted to also voice that I've read about, you know, differences in, you know, the economic stability and the reaction economically between something called built resource and natural resource type, you know, tourism incomes. And more often than not, if the income from tourism is associated with natural resources, it's way more beneficial to the town, way less negative impact long-term versus if we're focusing on, you know, increased regulations and increasing, you know, our propensity to be associated with things like bed and breakfasts and, you know, country inns, hotels. Those have long-term negative impacts on the town. The other aspect of that is there's no association between negative, you know, environmental impacts on the lake and, you know, short-term rentals. There's not, there's, people are saying that that's happening, but it's not. And if there's no facts to support that, that's really all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Smallway Barnett from 32 Chapman Lane, Galesbury. And I've spoken before as well, so I'm not going to repeat things that have been said over the past two years. But just to touch on a couple of things, I support what Tyler just said and what Marcus said about just, there's a couple of things in the ordinance that just still don't seem like they make quite sense to me as someone who's been doing short-term rentals for the past six, seven years. For example, the insurance requirement, like, there is no, not that I know of a short-term rental insurance that exists that I know of, so I, like, I would be happy to help answer any questions who may have about any of these things, like, such as the insurance type of thing, before we push forward with this specific ordinance. And I know there's other people that would also be happy to answer questions, but I'm not sure, like, who you have talked to already or not, but I'm definitely willing to help clarify anything if you do have any questions like that. And, I mean, other than that, I guess I'm not going to repeat all of the overwhelming, like, support for short-term rentals. I know we're not trying to ban that anymore, but there are, it does, like Tyler said, seem to be like a Long Pond issue rather than a Ledyard issue for a lot of the main issues from which this whole topic began. For example, like that party house that, like, started the whole thing, like, that's over. It's done now. It's not a rental anymore. And for the people, I just, I know, like, on Long Pond Road, there are like 40, at least 40 other people that live there that are not here today, and obviously, they do not have a problem with the rentals on Long Pond Road. Otherwise, they would be here. Like, I mean, a couple are, but other than that, everybody else seems to be okay with it. So that's, I talked to a lot of people about it. Oh, yeah, of course I support, but they're not coming to this meeting because they have other obligations to do, and they're not going to keep coming for two years just to each other's support. But, yeah, again, just to say, I could offer any other clarification for anything, but I do support what Marcus said and Tyler said and a couple other people about some of the specifics of the ordinance, but I'm okay with an ordinance as long as it makes sense and that it's somewhat practical for the people running it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Barnett, 61 Churchill Road. And I think I'm in the camp of, I support a ordinance, but not exactly how this one's run. And I think there are a lot of good clauses in this ordinance. And I think that there seems to be a fairly well-accepted agreement among everyone, even those that operate short-term rentals. Maybe not the one recently on Stony Brook Road that was not here, might not agree with this, but the party house is a disturbance to the town or to the neighborhood. And so the clauses that direct that or that are related to that seem like they make sense to me, and they seem useful. Some other clauses have nothing to do with that. And so I'm wondering why they really need to be there. So, like, environmental clauses. I'm a big environmentalist, and as a matter of fact, one of my favorite things about having families come each summer is that every little family of four that comes from wherever urban area they come from, I've got two more little environmentalists growing there who appreciate the fish and the turtles and the swimming and the nature, and they don't get that where they're from. We have a really nice area here. And so, but there's, there's no, I believe that the two properties that I run are more environmental than the average property at the lake. And I certainly haven't, I think that someone would be hard-pressed to argue or prove that that my properties are a harm to the environment in Long Pond. So I'm not sure why those clauses need to be there, and that's the category of overregulation. So like Chris Willis was, you know, saying before, you know, he's, he just seems as a little overreaching, so I'm in that camp. So maybe narrow down the clauses a little bit. And then there's also a couple clauses that I think are good clauses, but maybe could be tweaked. Like, like, it seems nitpicky, but like, an area, a local representative, that's great. The party house that was on Long Pond, that started all this problem, no one know who to call. So let's call that person. So I fully support that. You know, I give my, all my neighbors my number. Please call me anytime there's a problem. But what if I'm in the hospital? What if I'm on an airplane for five hours to San Francisco or something, you know, and I don't call back in two hours? Could there be, can I give us backup? That's a little, it's a nitpicky thing that maybe there should be changed, added to, but I'd hate to lose my permit just because I didn't get back in two hours. And so that, that's a nitpicky thing, but I could lose my permit. And to me, that's a huge deal. I have a lot invested in this. So I'm very fortunate that I inherited a property, and not everyone can say that. I feel very fortunate that I have a family in town. And then it was working so well, and it just seemed such a good thing, I bought another property that was a little rundown, not as rundown as the one I inherited, but it was a year-round there. There was an old woman who lived there a long time, and she was a very nice elderly woman. But she moved, and some people I think would like her to come back to, my time's up. And, but she's in the nursing home. She's not moving back. And so I think people have to be a little careful what they ask for because if I don't do short-term rentals there, and I do long-term rentals there, and they're not always perfect.
Thank you.
Take my time's up.
Can I ask one question? This is the first time I've heard something about environmental. I'm trying to figure out where this environmental clause in this ordinance that talks about environmental. The only thing it says is to go test your well, private well. It just has the lab results available.
The whole entire health section, like, it...
It just says that make sure that the septic system is inspected and the water, if you have a private well, that it is inspected and certified. And it says, the only thing it says environmental in the whole ordinance is that the list of certified labs on the Department of Public Health's environmental website. That's all it says.
Well, if you're concerned about a lot of the old properties or cesspools, not engineered septic, they'd be worried about the amount of phosphate if you were to test the septic or the cesspool. That's what they're going after.
But that's not what the ordinance tells.
It's, it's not what it says, but...
All it says is, so, the health. Each SDR property in the town of Ledyard served by an onsite subsurface sewage disposal.
It's not going to be in the ordinance what some people look.
This is what you're, what you're, what you've turned it into. And all it is, is basically saying that you need to verify that the septic system is okay and has no obvious signs of sewage breakout on the surface. And it says that if you have a necessary permit obtained from Ledlight for private water supply, it shall be tested for potability at the time of application. That's all it says. Well, it says nothing else about environmental, other than the list of approved labs to go get the water tested to is on DHP's environmental website.
Oh, and Chris, I think you asked me a question. Let me try to answer my question, but guys. And that, Kevin, in the beginning of the process, you very honestly said that you don't like Airbnbs. And so, and I...
That has nothing to do... That has nothing to do. My opinion has nothing to do with this.
Okay.
You brought up a statement.
But I think these extra clauses are making it difficult, and...
I think, but maybe driving, clauses may make it difficult, but they're realistic. Having lived in Ledyard, just bear with me, I've lived in Ledyard since the 70s, knowing that, as you well know, that there's houses down there that drink water from the pond. So a third person rents that unit, should know if the water is drinkable. It shouldn't be drinking from the pond. It may be nice to catch fish in it, but I don't want my kids drinking it. And from an envi, you've turned this into some environmental concern, when all it is, is just go verify that the water is potable. That's all the ordinance says. The septic is a breakout. It's a typical standard thing as a civil engineer, you know, licensed civil engineer. The septic breakout, that's what you look for. No one's running a test for phosphorus. Now, if there's a phosphorus problem coming from the septic, someone's gone down in the pond and pulled it out. I've never, ever, during all my septic reviews or something like that, if somebody's called me out, ever gone checking the water. You look on the surface to see if you have an obvious breakout. It doesn't exist, and the system's working. You may have to pump it because you've lost, really, the leach, but that's a different issue.
And I'm okay with that. And it's an added inspection, but it's not going to kill me. And I make some money. I can afford it. And however, we have an unusual situation at Long Pond where maybe one-third of the houses, or at least 10 or 20% of the houses on Long Pond draw water from the lake. It's a very old-fashioned thing, and, and I got you, you know it, but we've developed workarounds with it, and I provide plenty of potable drinking water, like, more drinking water than anyone's ever drank. And so I've got that covered. And if the town comes in and they want to, you know, supervise, I don't think there's any, Airbnb's are run all over the world, and the town is not getting sued for bad drinking water. The town is not getting sued for any kind of violation or health or safety thing. Right now, I'm liable. There's a lot of legal precedent in the state of Connecticut for landlords being liable for problems. And it's already there. It's existing. I don't think why Ledyard has to try to supersede what the...
Okay, so can we just, can we just say that you reposed to that section of the ordinance? Would that, would that capture it in one sentence?
In general, everything that doesn't have to do with problems that have occurred, such as party houses.
Okay, thank you. Next. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Pam Bartlett. I am from 62 Long Pond.
For me, I believe short-term rentals just can no longer go unregulated in Leder. Personally, I have experienced the party houses. I'm one of the people who certainly blew the whistle on the man who just spoke and parties that were happening at his properties, as well as my neighbor who lived right next door to me. It got out of control. If we hadn't shed a light on it, and I believe having shed a light on it is why these things have stopped, and I am so grateful. It's a lot of work and I'm going to constantly complain and I'm going to constantly come up and speak my piece until it stops because it's not fair to homeowners in our community and neighborhood. I feel misguided homeowners looking to make a profit by renting out their properties are jeopardizing the health, safety, and welfare of their neighbors and the prospective customers, the public. They're creating a burden on taxpayers and town services as well as diminishing the availability of affordable housing for families that work and live in the community. And they are creating significant negative impact on legitimate tax-paying, strictly regulated, small business owners operating local bed and breakfasts, country ends, and hotels. There's no reason for you, our local policymakers, to allow short-term rental operators to bypass tax or regulatory obligations that any small hotel, bed and breakfast, or country must adhere to. They are clearly a business competing with local hotel lodging and should be subject to the same taxation and regulations. I'm not against short-term rentals. I actually can see how it can work. I'm just going to submit this because it's pretty long and, and I think they can work. I think they just need to be regulated. I think in fairness, if people comply, if they act honorably, everyone's seeing dollar signs, and that's great. It's good for the community and taxes and I'm all for it. I'm not against that. I'm against people being a nuisance. I'm here tonight, I'm not having a peaceful enjoyment of my property tonight, and I haven't for a number of years now because I'm in the struggle and I'm invested wholeheartedly. I love this town. It's my first home I bought 10 years ago. I live on Long Pond, it's a beautiful place. I aim to preserve it and the water and the quality of life there. So I really appreciate your time. The only issue I have right now with the ordinance as it stands is there appear to be no penalties. If someone chooses to operate without a permit, what is the penalty? Are the permit fees intended to offset the added cost of having a designated official? And if not, why would taxpayers subsidize that? Can the Leder police enforce this ordinance? I had, I noticed on your application, it says failure to respond. Basically, there's ground for penalties that's set forth in the ordinance, and I don't see any penalties. So maybe some clarification there. I have a little printout of some examples, maybe if there were nuisance complaints, there's a fine attached. We have to find some way to make it hit home that, you know, there's a consequence for these actions. We don't want to have to police our neighbors all day. And if there's so many violations, you revoke the permit or, you know, some kind of consequences, something just black and white so we can all go home and enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Yes, hi. I'm Daniel Sean Morgan. I live on 33 Long Pond Road South. Towards, you know, there's noise ordinance and all these problems, you know, I'm for the short-term rental. I've been over at Long Pond for about six years now. The house I live in used to be my great-grandparents'. So, you know, I've been to school here in Leder, I'm a graduate of 1985. So I'm very familiar with Long Pond since I've been a child. Long Pond has been a long history of rentals, and I don't think anybody could deny that because I've seen it. My, my family's had owned property along Long Pond and throughout Leder. I just don't agree with a lot of these strict ordinances. That's been a history of Long Pond up to this day. I know Mr. Barnett, he has a couple, like you mentioned, a couple houses. He keeps them very well-maintained. I haven't heard any kind of disturbance, just like any other holiday, whether it's 4th or July. It ain't just short-term. I mean, you've got regular residents that put on picnics and this and that. I mean, I could probably complain more about some of our locals than the short-term, you know, if I really want to nitpick. But, you know, we're, you know, like a small community on the pond. We pretty much know everybody. You know, we got a problem, we'll say, you know, we see them, say, "Hey, look," you know. I just don't agree and understand where these complaints have come from, for what I see is not coming from the short-term. Like I said, you know, holidays, you know, a lot of-
So are you for or against the ordinance? I'm asking, Chris, that hearing is about the ordinance.
Yeah, I am against the ordinance. I am against the ordinance. I am for the short-term rental. I believe, you know, some of the regulations probably, you know, would help, but I think it's really going overboard and throwing it out against the rest of us that live along Long Pond. Thank you.
Thank you. Because I, the reason, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be rude, but, you know, at some point we all start to weigh things and, you know, we sort of need to know which direction we're going.
Yes, yes, I totally get it, yeah.
Thank you, though.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we- No, yes, I'm on. Okay.
Tim Lane, or Buttercup Lane, we are directly across from Bittersweet property. Okay. The things that we've seen, okay, and we've hesitated to call and a lot of them, we don't like to ruin people's fun or whatever they're having, but there's excessive noise, it goes into the Ave in the morning. I come in at quarter of one. We watch them come in on a Friday afternoon and it builds up and it's a party all weekend. We've seen birthday parties, they're great, okay? Parking, he has enough room to park probably 15 cars on his own property. It overflows onto Bittersweet, up and down, down in front of Todd's house, which is the first one at the bottom, Bittersweet, and then it comes up Buttercup, okay? It hinders emergency vehicles, fire departments, et cetera, police, okay? Not to say that it doesn't put young children, okay, in harm, all right? Damage, you've got damage caused to our property from the people coming in and out of that property, okay? I've had trouble in the winter with their plowing, all right? The town served them with a notice, okay, because it got that bad, all their driveway being pushed over onto our property, okay? I do have a concern with short-term rentals when they advertise 20 rooms, 20 people, okay? That is wrong.
So that would mean you are in support of the ordinance?
Yes, I would. Okay.
I'm just trying to always clarify what position people are taking.
All this is leading up to what it can be out of hand with this type of allowing. My question is, why has this been allowed to go on in this kind of a amount, okay, that's been going on for a year there now?
I'm not sure anyone here is ever aware of it.
I'm sure the town has heard about Bittersweet.
I've called the police twice about that property.
Yeah, we live right across the street from-
Okay, the answer to your specific question is if you refer to the town-
I didn't really sit down and write up a full thing tonight.
That's okay, but the town, if we're the town that you're speaking to, I have never heard a thing. In fact, I was, I was first made aware of it about two days ago when I looked it up online and forwarded it to a number of people.
All right, you did look on the internet and see the advertisement.
I did, I did, because I heard about it.
We brought it in yesterday-
Yep.
-to ask questions about the meeting, we listed the cover sheet, okay?
So, but, but to answer your question, we are certainly unaware of it. But which would make it, the ordinance would be, in fact, keep that from happening because you would not be able to have 20 people in a house.
And I presume there would be a vote on the ordinance in the end?
There will be a vote on the ordinance in the end.
All right, we also have trash litter, and they throw bottles into yards, okay, deliberately, okay? This has happened, all right? We've seen partygoers, I was coming up to Bittersweet, a guy came out with two dogs on leeches, walked into a guy's property, okay, and let him do their duty, okay? No control. Out-of-state cars?
Out-of-state.
A lot of them are out-of-state, and I don't, I don't think we really want a lot of out-of-state people in our neighborhood that we don't know who they are or where they're from, okay? You don't know what, they're going to size up and come back and do it.
Can I ask you to speak specifically to the ordinance? That's what the public hearing is for.
Okay.
And, and your time is up, and so unless you have more to add, we certainly understand your frustration, but the public hearing is for specifically for the ordinance.
One more thing. They have a light on the building on the end of the house. It shines directly out into Bittersweet, right into our property. It's an enormous flood. It shouldn't be pointing out into nowhere, it should be on his property.
Do you know who the owner is? Yes. Oh, and have you talked to him or?
He doesn't really talk to anyone.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and he's not there. Only time he comes or is when there's a problem, all right? I've had to call the police a couple of times.
I'm going to ask you to speak, if you would, maybe speak to the mayor at some point this week?
Yep.
Wait, I'm the mayor this week, aren't I?
Starting on, starting Monday. If you call me tomorrow, you'll get me-
Tomorrow, please. No, I'm just kidding. Because your concerns are legitimate and we, we would like to hear them. And I'm going to ask you to contact the mayor. And I'm going to, for our notes, I'm going to say you would probably be in favor of the ordinance because it's certainly going to solve a lot of the issues you're discussing.
No, I don't, I don't have a problem with short-term rentals or bed and breakfasts. I do have a problem advertising 20 people.
Yes, and the ordinance would cover that, would help that.
Okay.
So we appreciate and sympathize with what you're going through. And he, and the mayor is going to take your name and-
I'm going to write down your name or address for you. I'll just write down.
Is there anyone else to speak, wish to speak? Okay, I'm going to assume no one else is going to speak and I'm going to adjourn this public hearing. We will-
I was just going to write down my number for you.
I'm closing in.